Welcome, everyone. This is the November Business Meeting for the Akama School District Board of Directors. We are very pleased tonight to have translation available and could we have that announcement made in Spanish, please?
Muy buenas noches. Tenemos traducción e interpretación en vivo en español esta noche.
And if I remember correctly, Barb, the information to access the link for the Spanish translation can be found on the webpage as well?
Yeah, and in Board Docs.
And in Board Docs, okay. So if you were to go to Board Docs and select Yakima School District, it's Board Docs dot com with two D's and access Yakima School District, the information is there on that webpage to access the Spanish translation. Okay, I think we're ready to begin. We are very lucky tonight to have this amazing fifth grader from Barge Lincoln join us for a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Mr. Mendez to introduce her to you.
Yeah, good afternoon or more good evening, President Rice and Board and Dr. Green. Before I introduce that student, I'm going to do it in a roundabout way because Michelle, who's on, is one of our student leaders. And Ms. Tori Brennan, our Assistant Principal, leads our student leadership team. What she's going to do is introduce the music teacher. So we're kind of going in a roundabout way because there's something pretty special at the end about our student. What she's going to be doing in the future. So Tori Brennan, if you don't mind taking it away.
Good evening. So we have Michelle here. She's one of 12 student leaders at Barge Lincoln. And we selected Michelle to do the pledge of allegiance tonight because she's also part of the Around the World Foundation, which Marie Webb, who's on here and is our fabulous music teacher, and if you've ever had a chance to hear the steel drum group through Barge, Marie also leads that, which Michelle is also a part of. So this past summer, when Marie was doing some of her continual work for teaching, she was part of she was getting her Google certification and it was brought to her attention that she could participate in this platform where teachers from around the world and students from around the world could get on and have these forums. It was asked that a student from the United States was selected to speak and Marie immediately thought of Michelle, which Hector and I 100% agree with. So on Thanksgiving Day here in the United States, so next Thursday, Michelle will be getting on and speaking to other students from around the world in regards to her family traditions and why Thanksgiving is important to her. So Marie, would you like to add anything?
Just like Mrs. Brennan said, I was getting my Google certification and I'm part of an email group and the email came up that said we need participation and I went huh. So I went at six o'clock in the morning our time to a meeting, which was like nine o'clock at night, their time, and sat in and watched a bunch of wonderful students give three-minute speeches and I thought, we could do that. So I took it to Mr. Mendez and Mrs. Brennan and we're gonna do that and it's going to be Michelle who's going to spearhead it. So I will give it back to Mr. Mendez, okay?
Yeah, thank you for that and Marie, thank you for, Michelle, we're so proud of you. And so if you would go ahead and lead us, Michelle.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Great work. Thank you, Michelle.
I should also, I just want to add one more thing that Michelle, when she presents on Thanksgiving Day, will be presenting in Spanish and English.
Very nice. Michelle, you did a wonderful job with the pledge. Thank you for leading us in that. And I'm really excited to hear how your Around the World conversation goes and who you ended up talking with. That's quite an opportunity for you to represent the Akama School District as a fifth grader. That doesn't happen all that often. I'm gonna, I'll turn this over to the Board, the rest of the Board and let them thank you for being here as well as they may have a question or two for you, okay? Okay, Graciela.
Hi, Michelle. My name is Graciela. You did a really good job on this pledge of allegiance. I'm wondering if you can share with us one thing that you're going to share next Thursday when you do your presentation?
Well, I'm gonna be sharing about my traditions with my Mexican family and I'm gonna be sharing what we usually do and how we spend time together on Thanksgiving.
Cool. What's one thing that you usually do with your family?
We usually go over to my brother's home or he comes over to ours and we cook and we have a big dinner.
Awesome. Well, you did a really good job. Thank you for being with us today and I know you'll do really well next week for that presentation.
Thank you.
Raymond.
Yes, hello, Michelle. I'm Raymond. Very nice to meet you. Thank you for being here and spending part of your evening with us to lead the pledge. By the way, you did an awesome job in doing that. Also want to congratulate you for this opportunity you have to speak to the world. What an awesome opportunity to speak to the world from Yakima, right, and talk about your life and I know that you're gonna have an impact on the lives of who knows how many people that are going to be watching throughout the world. So, you know, thank you for representing the Akama School District. That's awesome that you're, you're very, very good representative of, of all the students and all the good work that teachers and administrators are doing in the district. So on the 24th, we're going to be cheering you on. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. And I did see that Kirsten dropped a link to a story about Michelle and the phone call. So you can check in the chat for that link. Dawn.
Hi, Michelle. I'm Reverend Davis and I'm so proud of you. You did an excellent job with the pledge. And I'm very, very excited about your participation on Thanksgiving Day with other young people around the world. And I know what you share with them is going to be a blessing. And just to know that you're gonna see the similarities that we all have, even though we are across the world, that we all have similarities. And I'm so proud that you are representing the Yakima School District and Barge Lincoln. And thank you, Mrs. Webb, for bringing that to Principal Hector and Tori. And I'm excited about the, I'm gonna get on. I'm gonna get on because I want to, I want to hear and see for myself. And Michelle, thank you for being a blessing to all of us and continue the great work.
Thank you, Dawn. Norm.
Hi, Michelle. I'm Norm Walker. I'm one of our Board members. Well, I wanted to thank, also thank you for leading our pledge tonight. And I have a question for you about Thanksgiving. A lot of people, Thanksgiving is about eating something special. What's one of your favorite things to eat at Thanksgiving?
One of my favorite things that we eat at Thanksgiving is tacos.
Is what?
Tacos.
Oh, tacos. You do a taco Thanksgiving. Okay. Do you use turkey in the tacos or something else?
We use something else.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, it was really fun to see the people from Barge today because my very first teaching job in 1978, that's probably before your principal was born, was at Barge Lincoln and I taught fourth, fifth, and sixth grade resource room. So I had a great time at Barge and I have very fond memories of Barge and I'm glad we have people like you coming through there to keep making us proud.
Thank you, Norm. I like the idea of tacos for Thanksgiving. I don't have, I don't get enough tacos in my life. Anyway, Michelle, thank you for being with us. We very much appreciate the time that you took and the wonderful job that you did on the pledge. And look forward to hearing from you about how the success that you had in your conversation with the other students around the world. If you want to stay with us, you may, but I understand if you have other things that are calling your name and like dinner or homework or something. So again, I want to thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mendez and Tori and Marie. Thank you so much for bringing Michelle here and sharing with us the story that she's going to be able to tell for the rest of her life about how she talked with kids around the world on Thanksgiving Day in 2021. So thank you so much. You all are willing, are more than invited to stay, but if you have to leave, we understand. Thanks so much.
Thank you for having me here.
Oh, Michelle, that's very sweet. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Yakima Land Acknowledgement. Reverend Davis has been asked to read that acknowledgement tonight.
The land acknowledgement. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on ancestral lands of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kidittas, and Kidicat in Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native people who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step towards correcting the stories and practices that erase Indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Thank you, Dawn. Well done. Okay, next on our agenda are reports. First, we have reports from members of the Board. I don't, I've received staff's input on advocacy priorities. And I have a couple of my own that I think we can fold into the three that staff sent out. I wonder if anyone has any other advocacy priorities that they'd like to suggest as we prepare for our legislative meeting, meeting with our legislators next Monday.
I'm just comfortable with selecting from the top 15 that we selected for the WASDA Legislative Agenda. If you wanted to pare those down and maybe highlight a few of those for our legislators, I'm comfortable with any of those.
Thank you, Norm. Trevor, to save my voice, do you want to go over the three that staff submitted for consideration?
Oh, I would love to. I might actually ask Rob if he could pull those up. Are they? See, I don't have those right at my fingertips at the moment. Rob, do you have those?
Sorry, I sprung that on you.
No, not a problem.
I have them. You want me to read them or display them?
Actually, why don't you just go ahead and read them and just describe them to the group?
Okay. Number one, fully fund special education. Each year, financial expenses required by providing specialized services for students with disabilities continues to increase. And situations where we live, where we don't have the ability to reach out to our community partners to serve our students as they do over in Seattle and bigger metropolitan areas is an even bigger expense to us and we also are required or asked to provide services for our smaller surrounding partner districts who have even less resources than we do. The second one is adjust regionalization and experience factors. Regionalization and experience factors continue to widen the financial gaps for districts with higher number of students living in poverty and districts with decreasing property tax bases. And the third one is update the prototypical school funding model ratios to meet students' needs for safety, increasing their mental, social, emotional, and behavioral health supports.
Thank you, Rob. I was in a legislative committee meeting virtually this last weekend and we had at least six senators or representatives join us throughout that meeting and talk to us about their their priorities that they're going to work on. Representative Stonier from down in the Vancouver area is going, is working on with, along with Melissa Gombowski, who some of you may know is the paid advocate for the ESD. They're working on readjusting the transportation funding formula, which is something that is desperately needed across the state. So we'll see how that goes. Senator Wellman is working on a bill that would focus on recovery, so student learning recovery and recovery for districts with an equity focus. Representative Lisa Callan from the Issaquah area is going to be suggesting a number of a number of proposals dealing with the social services issues that school districts deal with. She's a former school director in Issaquah, so she's very familiar with the issues of school districts. Representative Palet, who is a representative from like the North Shore area. I spoke with, with them about the equity-based funding formula. And I know that one of the three issues that staff submitted was an adjustment to the prototypical school model. I'm, I'm not naive enough to think that the prototypical school model will be replaced in any kind of a short hurry with an equity-based funding model. But I know that Representative Palet is, is going to be working on adjustments to that. And OSPI is coming out in their budget request with increased funding for nurses and other support services. So we can look forward to that. Is there anything that Board members would like to consider in addition to the three that, that staff suggested to us? I think, Norm, all three of those ended up in the top 15. So I think we could easily just go with those three. If you wanted to add transportation funding to it, I know that, that that bill will be dropped. How far it gets is another issue, but it is an issue for nearly every single district in the state. Okay. All right. So next Monday, we are having a virtual meeting with our legislators at six o'clock, right, Barb? And you'll, I think we have a calendar invite for that. So just check your calendar and you can the invite will include the link. Who do we have who has agreed to attend?
I can read that. Let's see. We have Bruce Chandler, Chris Corey, Curtis King, and Gina Moss-Brocker.
Nice. That's a good rep, that's a good representation. We've got the three from the 14th and one from the 15th. So that's good. I'm glad that they can make it. So six o'clock next Monday, the 22nd. Okay. Or is there any Board member who's not going to be able to make that? Good. We'll see you all there. Okay, next on the agenda, any other reports from members of the Board? Okay, next we have Superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the Board. I will begin as usual with the Character Word of the Month, which is Fortitude. Strength of mind that enables a person to encounter danger or bear pain or adversity with courage. In Spanish, firme, fuerza de la mente que permite a una persona enfrentarse al peligro o soportar el dolor o la adversidad con valentía. The trait is resilient learner and the característica en español, aprendiz resiliente. At this time, I'll now pass the baton to Stacy Locke, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and Jewel Brumley, a valued member of our COVID response team, to share both the internal and external COVID reports for our area. Stacy?
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Good evening, President Rice and Board of Directors. So Barb will pop it up here in a minute. And we'll go to statistics on the next page for the, the last couple of weeks and as you can see, we do have an increase of 41% in positive students, 16% decrease in quarantines and then an increase of four staff members with positive tests across our school district. In the next slide, we have, I think I shared with you last week that we have taken over working directly with BD Veriter and taken over the static testing site here with our YSD employees and the test that had been administered the last couple of weeks, around 607 with 25 positive cases and a decrease in positivity rate of 0.16. And again, we are working to expand that testing out into the schools as soon as we move into the first of the year. And again, elementary schools are still highest when it comes to students in quarantine and students with positive tests. You can see three of our highest, Dernobyl, Gilbert, and McKinley at this point in time. So let's share a little bit here in the next slide about vaccinations. And we are able to vaccinate ages five and up at these sites the last couple nights as well as on the 18th at Eisenhower. And I can tell you that the majority vaccinations given the last couple of days are students age 11 and under. So parents are getting their students out and getting them vaccinated, which we believe in the, the long run will definitely assist with quarantining students and getting them back in school where they belong. Additionally, in the next slide, I want to share where off-site Community Health of Central Washington is also, we have a flyer to advertise for them over on Tyotin Drive, 40th and Tyotin. There are, excuse me, hours of operation, offering both the boosters as well as for ages 11 and under. And we are struggling though. We met, we meet every other week with the Health District and we are struggling to find flu vaccinations. And I know that we've had a lot of requests to do the COVID vaccine and the flu vaccination at the same time, which we can do, but there's just a struggle right now to find that, that flu vaccination. And so there's extreme limited quantities. But we're still working to put that into play and to have opportunities for our younger students to be vaccinated. Questions I can answer for the Board?
Any questions for Stacy?
Okay, thank you. Jewel, would you like to present?
Yes, thank you, Stacy. So these are the county numbers. The daily cases have gone down, as you can see, actually since last week. So our daily numbers are below 50 a day now, which is, is really good. Our 14-day rate for the county is 364.1. So we've broken down into the 300s, which is good. Our seven-day rate again continues to lower, so 160 per 100,000 on the seven-day rate. Our vaccinated versus unvaccinated, we still have about 500 more people who have caught COVID that are unvaccinated versus the breakthrough cases of fully vaccinated people. So it makes a big difference. Our ZIP code data just came out today for November 14th and the 98902 went up a little, but all the others dropped. Some not by very much, but they did drop. So our hospitalizations are coming down. We, we hung around the 40s for the last week and a half or so and then we've dropped down into the 30s. We're actually at 29 today. So that's good and no one's intubated today. So that's also good. Vaccination rate for hospitalizations, nine people with breakthrough cases were in the hospital this month so far and 34 who are unvaccinated. This is updated as of November 8th. So number of deaths of fully vaccinated people has moved up to 35, 21% of the total deaths and 79% of total deaths are unvaccinated people. And that's since April 1st to November 8th. Percent hospitalized by age in November, we've had one person, 0 to 11, nobody 12 to 19. And then our highest rate is the 65 to 79-year-olds with 16 that were hospitalized. School age cases, again, this data just came out. So K-5 again is still the highest. Middle school is less and then high school is even less, but there's 47 new students in the last week and 15 new staff in the county last week that contracted COVID. Our trend data though is still going down. It was actually a pretty good drop by K-5 in the county. Vaccinated versus unvaccinated, initiating the vaccine, 57%. I updated the comparison. So how have we moved forward since Delta came in? So the, what we're looking at on the left side there is 12 and up initiated vaccine since September 1st versus the 13th of November. So how far have we moved since Delta has really started to take off and school started? So we have made some progress. Fully vaccinated, we're at 50. So we have made some progress, fully vaccinated, we're at 51.3%. And then this compares again since September 1st to now, how far have we moved forward in fully vaccinated of the 12 and up? And they don't have statistics yet for the five, five-year-olds to 11-year-olds yet in vaccinations. And then the forecast, actually I was like 40 off this week, so 39 off and I was high, so it's good. Delta has dropped off a little bit more than I expected. I suspect next week we'll go down a little bit more, but then once we hit Thanksgiving break, we should have a little, this goes out to December, we should have a little spike after Thanksgiving, but hopefully it's, it's a small spike. Anyone have any questions?
I just have some comments, I guess maybe questions, but it looks like your graph, there's a gradual increase there and what I'm hearing is there's another wave coming and that the increases, there's an increase in cases with school-aged kids and also the breakthrough cases as well, and they're anticipating a significant increase. What are your thoughts on that? Because I did notice your graph was, there's a gradual incline there.
There's a gradual incline, usually the, the national and of course Europe leads us. They lead us by a few more weeks than just as far as the graph goes into the first week of December. I really don't expect our incline to go up until later in December. It takes a few weeks to come to the Northwest. That's what the trend has shown over the last 20 months.
So we could expect the increase in like January, February, or is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, yeah, January will probably be a peak for us, but then it should start coming right back down in, in February, but it also depends on the vaccination rates, so if we start getting more students vaccinated, that should really help.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Jewel? Thank you Jewel and thank you Stacy. It's always helpful for us to get this information at our meetings. Thank you for continuing your data dive to get us, to get us these numbers. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you President Rice. I would also like to call attention to the recognition that I shared with the board a couple of weeks ago for Jewel in being acknowledged for her work. Today, we had actually Stacy was recognized as she's uncomfortable, as I mentioned this. She was recognized by principals and directors, executive directors, and acknowledged for leading in this time of COVID and doing such an outstanding job, directing all things that pertain to health and safety. So it's nice to see her recognized from colleagues and I think that's the greatest recognition of all. So I did want to call that attention to the board at this time. She will be signing autographs next week. We'll get her at one of the vaccination spots and she can shake hands and kiss babies with a mask on, with a mask on. The summer school recap, I have invited Principal Hasty, Heather Hasty, to share the summer school recap. As you recall, she shared the plan going into the summer and this is a more comprehensive historical look at what occurred during the summer. Thank you to Principal Hasty, knowing that she was overseeing this part of what was happening in our district at the same time, late in the year, preparing for a transition. As principal is a daunting task and I'm sure that she looks forward to a break here right around the corner. So without further ado, Heather, would you take over?
Absolutely, thank you so much. This is just kind of the final wrap-up with the summer school reporting and I had actually presented to the board more about programmatic details at the end of summer school as well. And so this just gives you a little more detail, you have a detailed report in your board packet. And so the first, oh, thank you, Dr. Green, I will slow down. The first migrant summer school this year, the format that we did this summer was virtual and the total served K8 were 363 students, 941 were invited. The program, they used the Math for Love program and then I station for the reading and they did four hours a day for 19 days, all summer schools ran for 19 days. And then the total cost and total cost is inclusive of, well, this is virtual, so it doesn't include the transportation. You'll see that on other slides, but the total cost with staffing and everything was $230,891. Then the other programs, the additional summer programs, which are funded out of a variety of funds that you'll see on the next slide, but we did a format of an in-person format. And actually, all students in the Yakima School District were invited for additional summer programs. The time was approximately three and a half hours a day for the 19 days. And the total served, I broke it down, the pre-K, we had 121 who attended, K4, 991 attended, 5 through 8, 262, and then 9 through 12, 812 students did attend. And on the success data for the 9 through 12, we looked at success by total credits retrieved. And so 125.5 credits were retrieved for 11 through 12 and 97.5 credits were retrieved from 9 through 10. And each student had the opportunity to get at least one full credit. One course is worth .5 credits, so they had the opportunity to make up two courses. And on the next slide, same with the additional summer programs, the total cost, this is transportation and everything wrapped together, was $1,351,657. And the funding sources, we have the S.R. Funding, also known as COVID Relief Funding, and then we had LAP, the Learning Assistance Program, which is through the state, Title I Funds, which is through the federal government. And then the School Improvement Funds, it was not included in the total cost. We had a couple programs, very small, but they ran their own, at their own schools. And so those aren't included in that total cost that comes out of their building. And then just one example, I talked to you just real briefly right there about the success with credit retrieval, but then K4 STEAM, we ran up at Gilbert and Jewel Brumley, in fact, who's on here, was one of our principals up there this summer. And as you know, she loves data, so we, she did all kinds of graphs and stuff. I just chose one to show you. And the success criteria, STEAM, just as a reminder, is the science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. And so the success criteria was that the students completed at least one project in one of the areas and that they'd met the standards in that area. So for the K4, we had 30% of students who were successful in the science portion, just in this one program, and then 13% in the technology, the engineering was 21%, arts 24%, and mathematics 12%, and students chose different projects and different standards to focus on with the help of their teachers, especially in the younger grades. And then the detailed information you have in the board packet, we utilize the same format as we have in previous summers. That format may very well change for reporting going forward for next summer as Dr. Ellis and the High School Work Group work on summer school for next year, which has already begun with planning. So any questions that you guys have with that?
Questions or comments from board members?
Just, just one with the, are we looking at expanding anymore when we know that we have significant, significant number of kids that are behind? So as part of our strategy to get them caught up, are we going to increase the size of our summer school?
Yes, so we're, we are hoping to again invite all students for summer programs, also intercessions with the December, February and spring intercessions is another opportunity that we have that we're already, that we've already been working on. And so yes, absolutely, and do even bigger marketing push earlier on with our students and our families and having family nights about it and engaging the community as well.
I do have a question. I was looking at the reports that the board can, has access to and I was trying to find more summative data by grade. Is that there or am I missing something or where can I go to find that?
Okay, that's a great question because we did, we utilized the format that we had used previously and so it, it does it more in terms of the funding source versus a summative data approach. And so what you're seeing is what we typically would be submitting for the grants at the end of summer school. And so that's one of the reasons that we're looking at doing a different format as we go forward too.
Do you have the data, the summative data that we, that perhaps look at or?
I do have summative data from the, the last presentation that I can absolutely send out to you guys as the board members.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, that we could look at by grade and see what.
Absolutely.
What's, what's going on there, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you Heather.
Thank you.
I am so excited that this, this last summer school was such a success. You had more kids this year than we've had, I think, in the last three years all put together. And that's exciting and the participation in the STEAM offerings is doubly exciting. So thank you so much and thank you for being here tonight. We understand if you have things pulling at you to, that you need to leave for, so like little ones that I think are lurking in the background.
They are.
All right, thank you so much Heather.
Yes, thank you Heather, we're glad that you could be here and please do be with your family. We appreciated your time tonight. The next report is an update on our attendance, which I would like to thank in advance. Shelby Lockhart for preparing this for us as part of our five main community commitments, one of those landing in the attendance area. So it's very relevant and necessary to have monthly updates. I would just remind before passing this over Shelby, we do have translation services or interpretation services, so please slow down.
Okay, great, thank you Dr. Green, I will speak slowly. And Barb, are you presenting there? I think Barb has the slides, okay, so this is a shorter and sweeter version of our attendance report. Martha, I too have been sick lately, so I apologize. This came in just recently, not last week as I had hoped, so I am back full steam today, so. Yeah. So here's our excused absences for our quarantined or virtual learning students. Just a quick note that these counts are fluctuating a bit, so if you look at last month's, you'll see some fluctuation due to our office staff still getting a handle on record keeping and cleaning data kind of backwards towards the beginning of virtual learning. So these are just still settling out, but it gives you some impression of the range of days that students have been out on quarantine. So we're doing our best to get you that data, but some of our office staff just need more time to settle and have time with their student information systems to clean data. Okay, go ahead Barb. So this is regular attendance rates and they're in sets of days absent. So you can see to the far right, there are 2,355 kids with perfect attendance. Remember, we don't want to make a big deal out of perfect attendance because we do want families to keep their kiddos home if they're sick. So to the left, you'll see five to one day, five to one days out. And then over towards the left, you'll see all the way to a group of 248 students who have missed a lot of days of school. This was pulled on day 54 of school. And so you'll see that there's a set of students that we are still trying to reengage in our school district. Okay, and then this is the breakdown by elementary school. And I did this one a little bit different so that you can see the size of the school. So Hoover is our big, big elementary school there. Down to Discovery Lab being the smallest of our schools. And then you can see in red what our state would call chronic absenteeism, so anything below 90% attendance rates. And that is a count of students, a number. Okay, and then by high school, again, the same by size of schools. And then the chronic absenteeism is in red, the 90% and above is regular attendance. And our district has the goal of 95% attendance rate, so that's in the darker green. And so that is what we have for this one. I did not do demographics on this one. I'll bring demographics at the next one to keep it kind of short and sweet on this one. Any questions about attendance for November?
Yeah.
Any questions for Stacy? Shelby, sorry.
Lock, Lockhart, it's, I get a lot of Stacy's emails.
It doesn't really show on the data, but do we have some kind of sense of how much of the absenteeism is COVID-related? Kids that are either quarantining or testing positive or ill with COVID-related things and how much of it is just kids that just haven't re-engaged yet in terms of just not, you know, being gone from school so much, they're just not in the rhythm and the habit of being in school every day? You know, do we have any kind of sense of that?
So in that first slide, there are about 19 students that have been out a lot due to quarantine. In the following slide, you'll see over to the left, there are 248 that have not really re-engaged. And so there's a small subset of students, I would say, probably not exactly 19, but somewhere around there that have been out due to COVID-related reasons. And then there's some other groups that we could break that 248 apart and see that there's some varying reasons. That's usually our high need families, high case management, lots of involvement with community resources. So each school is doing their best to work at that tier-three level is what we call it, to kind of case manage, do home visits, do community engagement boards. We've begun to petition with the Yakima County Courts and they're committed to case management as well. There's not a punitive response anymore. There's no, there's no engagement with the juvenile justice system when you get petitioned to Yakima County Court anymore. It is truly case management now. It's a more restorative response. So I don't have a number, but we could break the 248 apart and kind of give you some more ideas.
Sure, and then that, that information just kind of sparked another question, which is, do we have a sense of when we compare our district to either other districts around us or other districts our size? You know, are, are attendance rates kind of similar? Is this kind of a statewide trend or do, are we doing kind of better than average or worse than average? Or kind of where do we fit just in terms of the, the? Or kind of where do we fit just in terms of the whole state with with attendance?
I haven't compared us to similar school districts our size. I am part of a bimonthly OSPI attendance network of attendance leaders of different school districts. And without looking at their their actual numbers, the narrative in the room is very similar. It is, we are all coming up with creative ways to reengage students, keep students engaged in school when they do engage and deal with the complexities of a fall that we weren't predicting, some of the complexities of. So I go to those meetings and don't feel like we're alone. But I don't have numbers. I could survey some of our school districts that were compared to though.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Shelby?
Yeah, just some comments and maybe some questions, but the numbers seem alarming to me. I don't know, but I'm sure I heard in your voice as well that you're, it's a concern for you. So I appreciate that and all the work that you're doing. It seems like half of the students are what are at what six, six to 41 days absent, which is, that's a lot. And I'm kind of just, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking, just having thoughts about the future, how it's going to impact grades. Kids passing the next grade test scores, all of those times, I think, those things. And how challenging I think it is for for teachers and staff and principals and the district to get them where they need to be. If they're not in school, then it's just that much more challenging. So I feel for for you, for our staff. And I know you're all doing your best to get those, get those little guys and our students into class, into seats to learn. So and it's, I think it's another one of the effects of COVID, right? It continues to linger and continue to provide challenges for for the district. So thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I I do want to just say, I really want to recognize groups of the high school ninth grade success teams that are really looking at this data really closely. And I think they can stand as a good model that we can replicate in our district as teams that look at this data frequently. I think Jewel, you're in there. There's a couple of people in here that are on those. And they're doing a really good job of meeting frequently to look at attendance data and the impact of attendance on grades and also grades on attendance. So they're having those conversations which are really powerful. So I hope that we'll continue to be curious about that effort because I think it's a really good model for each cohort of our students.
You know, just another comment, you know, in higher education, we're we're kind of feeling the same effect, even though we're remote, right? So I think what what happens is some students get complacent at home and they get comfortable and they want to stay home. That's a small, a small percentage, but others, now they have other duties, right? Or responsibilities they have to fulfill with parents being sick or having to work and and so forth. That that really keeps them from going to school. So there's a lot of different, I think, more social type of of issues that families are dealing with that kind of get in the way of education. And I think those are the difficult issues to really, as a school district, right? To to deal with, so.
Thank you, Raymond. Any other questions or comments? I know that there's kind of a public awareness campaign. I've seen the, the reader boards and I've seen the billboards around town. I'm wondering, and the social media posts reminding parents to, you know, make sure their kids go to school. I'm wondering if there's any consideration given to expanding past that, like going on Spanish radio and or going on other local English speaking radio programs to talk about the importance of coming, getting your kids to school. I don't know, maybe there are. I don't listen to those programs very often. So I think maybe, you know, taking the next step in public awareness. I know at one point, Shelby, you had little poster boards and things that were going to go up into storefronts. I hardly get out anymore, so I don't know if those, if those are posted in storefronts. But I just, I'm wondering if if there's thought been given to kind of taking the next step for the public awareness campaign? And just so that you could share back with our buildings, a real appreciation for their outreach and trying to reengage these kids. Because we know how important it is that they get reengaged. And for some of them, that reengagement is quite a process and it's so much easier not to. So please share our appreciation with the buildings that they're doing that. Thank you.
Definitely, yes, there's a lot happening at the site level. And we did, like Stacy had mentioned, a lot of work with home visits and reengaging students in a safe way and just getting that continuum of support in place. So we also kind of paused on the pressure to attend school during kind of a rocky fall. So we're trying to slowly roll back into that community messaging. So yes, that's on the horizon and we're cautiously moving towards that without stressing people out. So, yeah, thank you. I I just want to say thank you for this time and I'm just proud to be in a district that's having these conversations. So thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Thank you for your work and that of your staff as well. I know doing during retrofit data is not, not easy and it's not fun. But we appreciate the fact that they're tackling that and to try to bring us updated data. Okay, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice. I really appreciate the final comment from Shelby in saying that she is proud to be in a district where we are having these conversations. It becomes very easy to not have conversations about what the challenges are and what could easily be hidden. But I think it's more of a testimony of the work of the board and support of the board in assuring that we have a solid strategic plan, that we are now acknowledging what I would call the brutal facts and making sure that we are putting in place systems to to change where we're at. But first, we have to recognize that. So thank you, Shelby, for calling that out as well. The final update, and this is a short update, not not very profound. So I'm making sure that our presenter knows that he does not have to go into great detail. But we do want to keep the board apprised of work towards a potential modified calendar approach as we near the new calendar year, knowing that our calendar committee comprised of three YSD members and administrative members, three as well, will be coming forward to the board here relatively soon in the in the coming months. So I will turn the time over to Will Surratt. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening, everyone. So I have placed in the chat a link to a sub page of our website that I'd like to thank Kristin Fitterer for building for us. And she has been an awesome partner as we kind of try to put information out to the community. You'll notice as you visit that page, if you visit that page, that tomorrow evening at six o'clock, the state is hosting a informational evening for an hour to talk about what the purpose of a modified or balanced calendar, those words get kind of used interchangeably. There are people that say that it's not balanced, it's modified, people that say otherwise. But we're kind of using both of those terms. And, you know, the David Hornak is kind of the leader in talking about the benefits of a modified calendar around the country. He will be doing a presentation to start the evening and then will be followed by a parent panel. This will also be simulcast in Spanish. So anybody that wants to participate that is either English or Spanish speaking has the option to do so. As far as progress here locally in Yakima, we've met, our committee has met once and talked about a timeline, making sure that everybody understands the expectations around when our calendar, our first calendar will be presented for the board consideration in January and then working backwards from there. We've built some calendar options that people can look at. And we're working with our YEA partners to ensure that what we place on the website, you'll notice if you've looked at the website, there's a spot that says calendars will be posted soon. I think tomorrow is the plan so that people don't get confused and think that what we have up there are the options to choose from. We want to make sure that people understand when they're looking at them. Here are some models of what a calendar could look like. And as we get into the the real planning phase, kind of between our Thanksgiving break and our winter break, whatever our community feedback and YEA feedback that we get will help us to build the final option that we present to the board in January. And we meet again Thursday afternoon.
Any questions from board members? Well, what kind of outreach are we doing to parents in the community to kind of inform them that, one, that this survey model method is available? And two, some of the benefits and and maybe disadvantages of moving to a modified calendar?
So the website is our primary locale for information. The plan is to push out through our Parents Square notification platform that the information is shared there. We'll be collecting feedback through a thought exchange. And then the district, the YSD part of the calendar committee consisting of an elementary, middle and high school principal team have been sharing resources with the rest of their colleagues. And each building has chosen to reach out to their parents and provide an informational time. And it's going to vary by building, but they all felt very strongly that a lot of the information that parents receive, they are used to getting it from the school itself and not the district as a whole. And so they want, they wanted to be able to reach out and and talk to their parent communities individually. So that is also planned between now and before winter break.
Are we doing any outreach to the community in general? So non-parents, which unfortunately in our community make up the majority of people in the district.
Kirsten is nodding. And so I'm going to defer to Kirsten.
Thank you, Will. Thanks for the question, President Rice. Yes, we are sending out information about the the modified calendar for feedback to the entire community via our regular channels of social media. Today, Dr. Green and Will also made a video that addresses the public and talks a bit about the process. And I understand that we will be able to get at least Dr. Green on the radio circuit soon about this topic.
It's nice to know that he's doing the radio circuit.
I did notice a big post on LinkedIn from the district as well this morning, so.
Nice, thank you. Thank you for that, Kirsten. Dr. Green and I are going to be facilitating a conversation slash discussion slash workshop at the State School Director's Annual Conference on Saturday. And the way my voice is going, it could be that he's facilitating and I'm just sitting there nodding. Who knows? But it will be interesting. Last I heard, there were 60 some people that were attending that workshop. By, and that was some time ago, so by now there may be more. But it'll be more of a discussion and and rather than a whole presentation because our, my experience in doing these in the past is that the people that attend that workshop are people that probably have already made up their mind that they want to pursue this and they want to know how. They've determined what their why is, but they want to know how. So we'll be over in Bellevue on Saturday. Do you want to add anything to that, Trevor?
I'm looking forward to the opportunity. There's a nice story on how we ended up presenting, but I saved that for another day. And we're excited to learn as well as share. So the great thing about coming together in conferences is it's just as much about learning as it is about sharing what's working and it'll be a great opportunity. So thank you, President Rice, for presenting with me.
Not a problem. You may be doing most of the presenting by then, who knows?
I'm counting on it.
Okay, next on the agenda, we, you don't have any other reports, do you, Trevor?
I do not. We can move to the monthly financial update.
Next on the agenda is the monthly financial update with Becky Neeson.
Great, and Becky, would you like me to kick it off?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Becky. I'll just have you pick it up after I go through the executive summary. We are very blessed to have Becky to make our budget more understandable and transparent. Again, thank you to Director Walker for his support in that as well. The October 2021 items of interest, next slide, is that the October enrollment has increased by 76 full-time equivalencies compared to the September enrollment, but we are still 10 FTEs below the budgeted enrollment. So there's a blessing there in the increase. And we still do anticipate that that will move up even greater and that will be closer to the budgeted amount. We have received over $900,000 in grants through the IDEA American Rescue Plan to support children ages three to 21 and then specifically three to age five respectively. Those are two grants. And lastly, in the items of interest, Davis and Eisenhower ASB both received $10,000 in grants from OSPI, which was a wonderful thing to have happen, given the funding that was lost during the COVID experience last year in the elimination of extracurricular student fees. So there is some recovery of that funding. Becky, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Dr. Green. So this is the K-12 and ALE enrollment trend. And you'll see there that the increase of the 76 FTE for October, as a reminder, that's the the line, the blue line. So next slide, please. And this is our across all programs FTE against the budget. And just as a reminder, I adjusted this slide last month for running start. So you see now where we are. This is the 10 FTE below budget. This is, so the October count does include the running start. Yeah, you proceed, Barb. Thank you. This is the revenue slide. And you can see we're just about even with last year for our October revenue. The block line is our budget line. This is the cash flow. We're a little below on actuals where the budget is, but we're coming out of year end. So I expect us to be right in line next month in November. The next slide. And this is our total expenditures against last year and then budget. We anticipate, and you should see that across all lines, the increase in expenditures due to the Essar funding. This is our payroll trend. Again, we're above last year, just a little bit above budget. And again, it's going to be up because of the Essar funding and Essar spending that we're doing. And then next slide will be the M-SOC, so our material supplies and other costs, anything other than payroll. And we are above last year, but and below budget. For October. And then our final slide is our SIR two expenditures. You can see by the ten-point framework, how we are doing in terms of spending that. And I have adjusted the percentages slightly based on the trend of spending for the district. For example, number two, providing physical and mental health and wellbeing supports. I've increased the allocation up to a twenty-five percent spend. We are. Spending. Several dollars in that area and. On purpose. So to for the learning recovery and to support our students. About any questions you might have?
Any questions for Becky? Thank you, Becky.
You're very welcome.
If board members have any questions between now and our next meeting, they can certainly reach out to you and. You can walk them through that. Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Um. Next on our agenda, our comments from the public on agenda items. Barb, do we have anyone who has signed up for comments on agenda items?
Not on the agenda items, no.
Okay, but we do have somebody for the second opportunity, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, we will get there before too long. It won't be much longer. Okay, next we have item C1. Policy one thousand point three point one governance, governing style. This particular policy. Was adjusted based on conversations that the board had. Around. That we had a couple of weeks ago. And so the. The board has had. An opportunity to review. This. This particular policy update. Is. Is there any, are there any questions or comments on this update? Okay, this will be for first reading and then we'll do second reading at our next board meeting. So if board members have a chance to kind of digest. The update that we made. And wish to make any comments to that, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll approve it at our next meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of items. That the board is required to approve either by policy or by state law or. Administrative code. These are typically. Items that are delegated to the superintendent, but that the board is required to approve. So tonight, the consent agenda consists of approval of. Minutes of October, of the October meetings and the September twenty-seventh meeting, which we postponed from last month. The October meetings are October fourth. Eleventh, nineteenth and twenty-fifth. And the board and identification that we had a meeting, a gathering. Where the board quorum was present on October tenth. Next, we have a notification of warrants. And tonight we have two groups of ASB warrants. Four groups of general fund warrants and one group of payroll warrants. Next is the budget status report for August two thousand and twenty-one. Number five is the budget status report for September two thousand and twenty-one. Number six is budget status report for October two thousand and twenty-one. Number seven is approval of personnel actions. And number eight is approval of out of endorsement assignments. Any board member has the right to remove any item from. The consent agenda for a separate action and or discussion. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, Martha, I'd like to request that. We remove the action item, non-certified personnel request for a separate vote so that I may abstain.
You're still on mute.
All right.
It's okay.
I usually, I usually wait till much later in the meeting to do that.
Yes.
Um, we will remove the, from the personnel actions, the non-certificated staff for separate action.
Can I do that in this meeting and move it down to the action ones right now?
No, we'll just take care of it now. We don't need to move it.
Okay.
Any other item that a board member wishes to remove for a separate action and or discussion? Okay, Raymond has asked that we remove the non-certified staff personnel action letter. So I would entertain a motion on the non-certified personnel action letter for approval.
So move.
Moved by Dawn.
Second.
Seconded by Ray, by Norm. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
I abstain.
Wait, I'm confused. I thought we were voting to move the item out of consent agenda, which was at your request. So I'm confused as to why you would abstain.
I thought she said to approve, to approve that as a separate. Action item is what I heard.
She said to approve it as a separate item action.
Norm, would you like?
Oh, okay.
Would you like?
I'm confused then.
Would you like us to take a vote to remove it from the consent agenda and then take a second vote to approve it? We can do that if that's what you'd like.
Well, no, I was just confused by what we were doing. I thought we were voting to remove it. From the consent agenda to deal with it separately.
Okay, we can do that.
Well, I. Was that what the motion was to do?
No, the motion, the motion was to approve it. But I don't know who made the motion, Dawn.
I made the motion.
Well, okay, well, I guess that's where I'm confused because I thought the emotion was to. I thought the motion was to remove that one item from the consent agenda. Was the motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
No, no, the motion was to you, to, to approve this, the, the number seven. It needed a second and then we'll vote on it, right? It's Raymond is abstaining from this because of personal. Thing.
I re, I, I worded it incorrectly. So let's, can we start over?
Okay.
Well, we do still have a motion on the table and one vote. So what do we do with that?
Who made the motion, Dawn? Did you make the motion? Are you willing to withdraw so that we can start over?
Why withdraw and this already done? All we have to do is vote. Yes or no?
I, I think if I'm, I'm remembering, trying to remember back to Robert's rules. Is that you do take a vote to remove something from a consent agenda and then you vote on. Whatever it is that got removed.
If there's a vote necessary. Done that in the, we didn't go last time I asked for. A meeting minutes to be removed, so.
Okay.
So I don't know.
All right.
I mean, we're right in the middle of a motion and a vote, so I could think we just.
Let's, let's just continue then. If, yeah, we'll, we'll remember for next time. Or somebody will call us on it, one of the two. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to vote on. Approval of the. Non-certificated personnel letter from. That was removed at Raymond's request. Do I have a second?
I thought we did that already.
We did the second.
Who was the second?
Norm's, Norm's seconded. Then we called for a vote. Raymond voted.
I was the last one.
Okay, so I'm sorry, guys. I think it's cold medication. That's what I'm going to blame it on.
I could continue with the roll call if you would like me to.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Help me, Barb, help me.
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva.
Aye.
And President Rice.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, four zero to one. So four yays, zero nays and one abstention. Okay. All right, next we'll take care of the consent agenda, the remaining of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So move, so move, second.
Who was, who moved, Raymond or Norm?
I did.
Okay.
I seconded.
Okay, moved by Raymond, seconded by Dawn. Is there any discussion? All right, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, I apologize, you guys. I'm not usually that. Out of it. Next, we have action items. The first action item is approval for purchase of illuminate. Balanced assessment systems. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President Rice, members of the board. I am here this evening to request your permission to purchase the illuminate pre-K through twelfth grade balanced assessment management system. In the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We are utilizing SIR funds for this purchase. This is a full assessment system that will help us.
Speak a little slower, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. I apologize. This is really a purchase that we need to put in place and as we're expanding our multi-tiered systems of support. And it is a platform which will allow us to pull together data. Not just from the academic setting, but also for social, emotional and behavioral data. Attendance data, discipline data, all into one system. That allows our staff to better manage interventions and extensions for students in a timely way. It is directly aligned, honestly, to all five of our district strategic improvement goals. It is a critical purchase for us to achieve goal number two and goal number three. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Do any board members have questions on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none. The board is being asked to grant permission to purchase the illuminate pre-K to twelve. Balanced assessment management system in the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Even. Using SIR funds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have. Approval for an amendment to section three C of the superintendent's contract for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four. Dr. Green?
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. Before you is an amendment to section three C of the contract. The requested action is for the board of directors to approve the amendment for section three C.
Slow down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm watching out for you, Patty.
Yeah, gotta heed my own counsel. It's easier to give than the practice. So the requested action is to approve an amendment to section three C. Of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four superintendent contract. It does align with the strategic plan, but also the fiscal impact is provided in the district budget. The background. Is that the latest version of the contract that addressed section three C. Was in such a way that payroll was unable to process the contract. So to alleviate the payroll issue. The language is returning, proposed to return to the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three contract language. Which is described. Below and it's the language that has existed for. Multiple years. Would you like me to read that, President Rice, or? Answer any questions?
I don't know that you need to read it. Did board members have any questions? The board has had an opportunity to review this. To, I like a motion to approve the amendment for section three C to, of the superintendent's contract.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Raymond. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. We've reached the second opportunity for comments from the public. And I understand that we do have someone who. Signed up to speak to the board this evening. Barb, are they, is, is that person online now?
She is listening to our live stream and she's going to be logging on to comment.
Okay, so in the interim, I will. Slowly. Read the protocols for comments from the public. The purpose of community input is for the board to listen to concerns of the community. Speakers will be treated in a respectful manner. The board does not engage in dialogue at this time or typically respond to items that are not on the agenda. The audience is expected to give their attention to the speaker. Members of the public are asked to sign in prior to speaking, which she did. Introduce yourself and state all affiliations with the district. For example, I'm a parent at this school, I'm a staff member at that school, or I'm a community member. Comment on agenda items are during the first comment period. This second public comment period is for items that are not on the agenda. Try to keep your comments as close to three minutes as possible. Speak only once on each agenda item. Refrain from discussing the performance of an employee or the interpretation or application. Of the district's labor agreements, including grievances. And refrain from making derogatory comments about individuals. Barb, is she on yet?
Yes, she is. Hi, Kate.
Hi, Kate. Thank you for being here and navigating through the process to notify us that you'd like to speak. Barb's going to start the clock and you have three minutes. Please introduce yourself and state any affiliations that you have with the district.
Great, I'm Kate Prangerman. Thank you for having me. I'm the parent of a kindergartner at Roosevelt Elementary School. Who just got her first vaccine dose last week and we're very excited. who just got her first vaccine dose last week, and we're very excited and we're eager to see more vaccinations among her peers. So um I just wanted to start by thanking everyone in the district who's worked so hard amid the constantly changing regulations to keep our kids safe this year, and even though it's been frustrating as a working mom to have these constant interruptions to our childcare, like, I appreciate all the work that you are doing. I'm thankful for masks in our schools and that vaccines are available to our younger students. But I came here to advocate for adopting COVID policies that recognize the game-changing ability to vaccinate the five-and-up age group. You know, right now, as I understand, the school district's policy asks all students, regardless of vaccination status, to wait five days before testing any symptom and to wait ten days if they've been in contact with someone with COVID. That's a lot of missed school for our children and to my mind, doesn't reflect the public health policies we've adopted um for adults that reflect our vaccination status. So um, whoop, I lost track of my notes. But I, I believe that if we, you know, took a more balanced approach to risk as our children get vaccinated, more families that are hesitant, hesitant will, ooh, there it's going, more families that are hesitant will see a reason to choose vaccination for their children because it'll enable fewer interruptions to their schooling and then benefit our entire community. And so I was looking today at the recent guidance from the State Health Department published October twenty-seventh, which states that fully vaccinated students who meet the definition of close contact and remain asymptomatic are not required to quarantine or participate in the test-to-stay program, although they should get tested three to five days after their exposure date. And I have also been told that the school district's guidance regarding waiting five days before testing any symptom is from the Department of Health. But in a clear infographic that the Department of Health released on October twenty-seventh showing, you know, the flow chart for symptomatic students, there's no mention of the five-day wait policy that the school district requires. And if negative, students can return to school once their symptoms are improving. And for second-tier symptoms, such as a tummy ache or headache that resolves quickly, this guidance says students should be able to return to school in twenty-four hours. That makes a lot more sense than the week-long wait before testing that our schools and nurse recently recommended to my family. Um, and I just think that these common sense policies could really help us and encourage folks to get vaccinated and see that carrot. And so I hope that um the district can adopt policies that reflect the benefits of vaccination. And I know it takes time to do that, but I just wanted to encourage it since school is important, and you all know that. So thank you.
Thank you, Kate, and.
How did you, Barb, spot on, right?
Spot on. Good time management. Um, thank you for um being with us tonight and for sharing that. We'll certainly take your suggestion under advisement and if the district has, Stacy in particular, has any questions for you, I'm sure she knows how to get ahold of you.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us, if only for just a little while. We look forward to hearing from you again. Barb, do we have anyone else who has signed up for a public comment? Okay, Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive?
We actually do have a need for a very short executive session.
Okay, for how long?
Uh, ten minutes, and it would be potential litigation with legal counsel.
Okay. Um, I need a motion to move into executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of uh potential litigation with legal counsel.
So move.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva?
Aye.
And President Rice?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And Barb, remind, remind me where we're joining at.
Yep, I'm moving um you into uh breakout rooms right now as I speak. Just takes a couple of seconds to get all into the same room. And as soon as I have that, it'll populate up on your screen.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay, seeing none. Thank you all for joining tonight. Uh, we won't see you next Monday um for the legislative meeting, so I will, I will wait until then. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Six o'clock next Monday, virtual meeting with our legislators. Thank you all. Have a wonderful rest of your week and um take care.